Tax equity, solar feed-in tariff programs, and PACE financing may have been hard to follow at times. But one thing everyone understood was that green energy can save green money and even help make it when it's financed right. I'm Anna Margos for LA this week.
Councilmember Paul Coretts, who helped moderate the discussion, has been at the forefront of several Green City Council initiatives, such as the city's new ban on plastic bags and a plan to make the city completely free of fossil fuels by the year 2025. And on a more personal level, some local residents are learning their own lessons of sustainability as gardens are planted for them to access and maintain at the housing project where they live. The sprinklers are in working order at the Avalon Gardens Housing Project in South LA. And now, true to its name, new edible gardens recently constructed by the nonprofit organization in Rich LA are ready for planting at Avalon Gardens.
We built these edible garden beds. Put in sprinklers. We're gonna put in a potting bench. And there's 18 beds here. And the idea is for 18 residents in this estate to use it to plant edibles, all organic, obviously. And for them to start enjoying some of the wonderful Whole Foods that a lot of the rest of the city enjoy.
Due to the limited number of garden beds versus the number of interested residents, a raffle was held to determine the first 18 to take ownership of the gardens.
I'm really happy about this garden, that they opened it up. I'm gonna plant a lot of fruits, being healthy. It can be near to my house. I don't have to be running to the market. I can be cooking and come and check my garden.
This is the first time in Rich LA, which builds school gardens, has worked with the Los Angeles Housing Authority to build gardens in the community.
The idea here is to start small. These are 18 eight-foot diameter beds. And if this is a success, then there's no reason why we can't expand this garden. We have plenty of space in this estate.
In Rich LA, volunteers and residents planted lettuce, kale, and strawberries, as well as eight fruit trees. Councilman Curran Price, who represents the district which encompasses Avalon Gardens, was on hand to lend a hand.
We're working hard, getting the alleys cleaned, getting streets cleaned up. And creating gardens is a very natural way for citizens to get involved, to help improve the community.
Weekly workshops will be held for the kids of Avalon Gardens to teach them about gardening and healthy eating. A community effort that's rooted in raising a green and healthy-minded next generation. Boston Consulting Group in LA funded the project while in Rich LA did the heavy lifting. How often do you get to eat for free at a restaurant? That's just what hundreds of community members got to do as they helped celebrate the grand reopening of the La Brea Bakery. Anna Margos attended the party.
So let's hear it for bread!
The La Brea Bakery got in a one-two punch. This was both a 25th birthday party and a housewarming party as the cafe celebrated its move to a new location on La Brea. And yes, bread here took center stage.
When I first introduced this, what I call sort of a European style of bread, meaning a hearty loaf cooked on a deck oven, right? Not a squishy square loaf that's in a cellophane bag. It was new to a lot of people.
But now, the La Brea Bakery, its breads, its pastries, pizzas, and focaccias and sandwiches have become a time-honored tradition in this corner of the La Brea corridor.
Now you have the La Brea Bakery here again on this corner. They used to be down the street. They've become a dynamic light. People want to be, they'll walk on the shops, look at the art. It's very special, so...
So it encourages business?
Well, it encourages the neighborhood. Neighborhood encourages business.
Because of your work, you're forcing other restaurants in the city to step up their game.
And what's a party without free food? To celebrate, the restaurant is giving away 600 pizzas, 400 pastries, and 200 sandwiches.
Oh, I love it! It's like trick-or-treat for adults. It's so much fun to be here, and the food's not fattening because it's all free.
It's very much like these great restaurants in San Francisco that we're bringing here to LA. And I'll bet you anything, in the next many years, you'll see many, many more.
For many customers, it's been a 25-year tradition. For others, it has now become a new one: the place to get your daily bread. I'm Anna Margos for LA this week.
The La Brea Bakery is located at 468 South La Brea, about a block down the street from its former location. Thousands of new life-saving trauma kits donated to the LAPD. America's second hottest neighborhood gets more pedestrian-friendly improvements. And a park in South Los Angeles receives an award for being environmental. These stories and more in City Beat. The Board of Police Commissioners has voted to receive 8,000 trauma kits donated by the Los Angeles Police Foundation, an independent nonprofit that provides resources and support to the LAPD. The kits, which were previewed for the first time at a recent commission meeting, include updated materials to replace ones used in kits created in 1998.
Within the budget, we would have never been able to get this in a timely fashion where it can save a life. And this will make all the difference.
A major improvement is the inclusion of advanced tourniquets, which saved countless lives in the aftermath of the Boston Marathon bombing. Eagle Rock was named America's second hottest neighborhood by the real estate brokerage firm Redfin. To help maintain the neighborhood's small-town feel and to help improve pedestrian safety along Colorado Boulevard, three new crosswalks with flashing pedestrian-activated lights were installed at Glen Iris, El Rio Avenue, and Hermosa Avenue. Councilman Jose Wezar's office worked with the LA Department of Transportation, the Bureau of Street Services, as well as community members in bringing forth these and other improvements to Colorado as part of the so-called "Take Back the Boulevard" initiative. The South Los Angeles Wetland Park Project was recently honored by the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure with the organization's highest honor, the Envision Platinum Award. The award was bestowed to the city's Bureau of Engineering and a consulting firm, not only for transforming what was a former brownfield site, but also for creating new urban green space and for designing the park to use urban runoff.
Stormwater is conveyed to the wetlands by underground systems that remove trash and other soils.
The park is bordered by South Avalon Boulevard and San Pedro Street between East 54th and East 55th Streets. The death of Marguerite Lamott back in December has left a vacancy in the LA Unified School District Board District 1 that will need to be filled with a special election to be held on June 3rd. Potential candidates will be able to declare their candidacy by filing a declaration of intention to become a candidate with the Office of the City Clerk Election Division, starting from Monday, February 10th to Tuesday, February 18th. Candidates may obtain detailed information and assistance by calling the Election Division at (213) 978-0444, or by viewing the Candidate Information Section by going to cityclerk.lacity.org/election. One of California's most prominent African-American politicians is being remembered as a trailblazer and a champion of education. He passed away in 2012. But as Anita Bennett reports, his legacy lives on at a school in South LA.
D-D! Hey, hey, hey! DHS, we are the best! D-D! D-D-H-S, D-D!
With a rousing welcome from its cheering squad, this high school in South LA is being renamed after Mervyn Diemley, one of California's political pioneers.
Mervyn Diemley was an extraordinary and remarkable man. Came from Trinidad. And he learned the political system very quickly.
Over his lifetime, Diemley broke a series of racial barriers. He was California's first black state senator and its first black lieutenant governor. After leaving state office, he was elected to Congress and represented South LA.
We are naming this school for him in an area that cherishes education, that can benefit from it, and will have him for always as a positive role model.
Before tossing his hat into politics, Diemley worked as an educator and later wrote a book about his journey. He died in 2012 at age 86.
I deeply regret that he's not with us today. But I feel comforted to know that prior to his passing, he was very much aware that a school was being named after him.
Now his name and legacy will live on at LAUSD's Mervyn Diemley High School Academy for Multilingual Arts and Sciences.
Within this community, we are a multicultural community. To have someone of such distinction and a former lieutenant governor, the first African-American lieutenant governor of California, means the world to us.
And the high school here has more than 600 students, and they're all learning a second or even a third language. In South Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
The campus opened in 2012. Before being renamed, it was called South Region High School Number 12. In this week's List of Things to Do, an outdoor party celebrating Valentine's Day, the Harlem Globetrotters come to town, and the LA Zine Fest. Looking for a unique way to celebrate your loved one this Valentine's Day? Head on over to Grand Park Downtown for the Funky Soul Lovers Edition on Friday, February 14th, from 8:00 PM until 1:00 AM the next morning. The Soul Party will be complete with dance floor and live music, food trucks, and a full bar. This sweet dance party is presented in partnership with the Echo and Spaceland Presents. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue Downtown. Go to grandparkla.org for details. The world-famous Harlem Globetrotters' one-of-a-kind shows feature mesmerizing ball handling, an assortment of trick shots and high-flying dunks, all with an array of comedy guaranteed to entertain the whole family. And on Sunday, February 16th, the Globetrotters are coming to town, to Staples Center to be exact, for two games, at 12:30 PM and at 5:45 PM. And these games on February 16th take on a twist as you, the fan, are invited to vote online for one of three new game-changing rules you want to see on the court. For details, to vote, or to buy tickets, go to harlemglobetrotters.com. Staples Center is located at 1111 South Figueroa Street. Anyone who's ever shopped the store at the LA Central Library knows it's got more than just books. The Library Store offers a carefully curated collection of fun and eclectic gifts, from whimsical T-shirts to educational toys for kids. And now, the Library Store on Wheels will be parking at the LA Zine Fest on Sunday, February 16th, from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at Helms Bakery in Culver City, located at 8703 Washington Boulevard. The Zine Fest is an opportunity for people to share self-published works. A portion of your purchase from the Library Store supports the Los Angeles Public Library. For more info on the Zine Fest, go to lazenfest.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. It's one of our city's oldest annual traditions, the Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown celebrating Chinese New Year. This year, the Year of the Horse. There's no mistaking this parade for anything else but the 115th Golden Dragon Parade in Chinatown. The never-ending dragon danced down North Broadway and Hill Street, delighting families who came out for the popular festival.
Just wishing everybody a great year of the horse, a proud tradition here in Los Angeles, the tradition of all of us, the Chinese-American community in particular and all they've contributed. So pleased to be the grand marshal and pleased to be the mayor of this great city.
Happy New Year!
Mayor Eric Garcetti, joined by his wife, walked the parade route, wishing everyone a prosperous new year. Councilman Gil Sadio, who represents Chinatown, also offered some auspicious predictions for this horse year.
We're gonna plow forward like a horse with the thoroughbred of a mayor and his workhorse is behind him. We're gonna change the city and make it a great year for everyone.
The Year of the Horse is believed to be a fortunate year that brings luck and good things.
It gives us time to spend time with our family and to give wishes to each other and hope each other live longer and prosper.
This year's celebration also included a children's festival where kids got to try their hand at aerial acrobatics with this contraption. And no boat rides here. Instead, kids got to ride on the water in these floating bubbles. While the two-day festival celebrated an important Chinese holiday, it showcased the traditions from the East, as well as the diversity of our city. Guaranteeing an experience that was uniquely LA. And after the parade, there were live music and acrobatic performances on several stages, as well as a craft beer garden and food trucks. If you missed it this year, definitely mark it on your calendar. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning. It's Wednesday, February 12th, and I want to welcome everyone to City Hall. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Mr. -- the public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonna, Buscayino, Sadio, Fuentes, Wezar, Coretts, Corrigan, Labance, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Wezar moves, Coretts seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Parks moves, Sadio seconds. Where does that bring us?
Mr. President, before running through the agenda, we have requests to continue Items 1D and 1E to February 26.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
And Item Number 9 to February 26.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order on Item Number 9.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 13 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on Items 1, 2, 10, and 13.
Okay, why don't we hold those items? Members, we're on Items 1 through 13. Any specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk? Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
I mean, Madam Clerk on that one. Okay. Can we go, Mr. Clerk, to the next section, 14 through 32?
Yes, sir. And on those items previously, the ordinances will go over for one week and let's reconsider later with 12 members.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonn?
Consider or continue Item 19 for one week, please.
Okay, item 19, per Mr. Bonn's request, for one week. Mr. Clerk, that'll put us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to February 19.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order on that item. Do we, members, specials members? Mr. Coretts?
Items 18, 20, and 36 as specials.
Okay, if we could hold those items. Well, we're not at 36 yet, so we'll hold... What is it, 18 and 20? We'll hold per request of Paul Coretts. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Buscayino?
Fourth with on Item 31, please.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next section.
Mr. President, Items 33 through 38 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are before us.
Mr. President, we do have cards on 33, 36, 37, and 38. That leaves Items 34 and 35.
Okay, well, it's specials members, seeing none. Let's prepare to vote on those two items. Let's open the roll. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Mister Clerk?
Mister President, Items 39 through 41 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, I want to hold them on the desk until I have a chat with Mister Krikorian.
Very good, sir. On the continuation agenda, Item, uh, 42 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that item is before us. Uh, Mister Parks?
I just might ask if we could have that out of order because the family and police officers are here.
Okay, so we'll take that up, uh, when, as soon as you're ready. Okay, Mister Parks, can we do it now?
Thank you very much. Uh, let me ask LAPD officers and the family, uh, to come up at this time. Uh, this is a reward motion for a victim, Paul T. James, 41-year-old resident of the 8th District, and we're going to ask the officers to give their name and assignment and also to give an overview of the crime. Uh, this is a $50,000 reward, and then we're going to have, uh, Ms. Janet Hempel, uh, the sister of the victim, make a personal plea to the public for help.
My name is Gerard Ovehar, and I'm a detective currently assigned to the, uh, LAPD Criminal Gang Homicide Division, and, uh, today I'm here to ask the help of the council and the public, uh, as it pertains to the death of, or the murder of, uh, Paul James, a 41-year-old, uh, male. Uh, Paul was walking in the area of, uh, 9632 South Hoover Street, uh, back on October 12, uh, October 11th of 2012. Um, he was approached by a suspect wearing a gray hooded sweatshirt, uh, at which time, uh, the suspect fired numerous shots, uh, at Mister James. He was struck, uh, in the upper torso and succumbed, uh, to his injuries. Uh, at this time, uh, all the investigative, uh, leads, uh, have been exhausted, and, uh, we're reaching out to the public and to the council, uh, to, uh, assist us with this, uh, the closing, uh, of this case or the resolution of this case. Uh, if, uh, there's anybody, uh, in the public that, uh, has any information in regards to this case, uh, you can contact us at Crime Stoppers. Uh, it is, uh, phone number is 1-800-222-8477, or at Criminal Gang Homicide Division. Phone number is 213-485-4341. Thank you.
Thank you. And we could ask, uh, is Hempel to come up at this time and the family? And why don't you introduce your family members that are here with you?
Well, I am Joyce O'Quinn, and I will be speaking on behalf of the family. Um, this is my, this is my uncle, Dr. Bonnie James, my sister Janet Hempel, and then the Mister President, to the Honorable Bernard Parks, council members. On Thursday morning of October 11th, 2012, I was at work talking with one of my coworkers. For planning purposes, we glanced at a calendar on the wall. I commented on the consecutive numbers, 10, 11, 12. I thought it was interesting. The very, or that workday passed as just another day in life, but I will never forget the call that night from my brother-in-law informing me of Paul T.'s death. He said, "Joyce, T. got shot." There was a pause, and he said, "T. is dead." The words only became real as I heard background sounds. My sister Janet was crying. She was wailing. Thursday, 10, 11, 12, is a day I will never forget. My brother was murdered on that day. On 10, 11, 12, our family was torn apart. The family dynamics were fractured. Crisis does not always draw people closer together. Today, there is pain, there is anger, and again, the word pain. We are a broken family. Paul T. was a son first, a brother, husband, father, and to others, a friend. He's not here because somebody murdered him. I believe, we believe, that the healing process can begin with the justice, the arrest, and prosecution of the person who violently killed Paul T. on Thursday night, 10, 11, 12. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, LAPD, and Detectives Ovehar and Hicks. In a society that lacks civility, we need police, and when police have done what they can to protect, then it's their duty to serve. Our family pleads for the public to have compassion. We plead for the public to come forward with information. Please help our family by responding. There is a reward offer of $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and also want to thank, uh, Dr. Bonnie James, former president of Southwest Community College, for being here with the family. But we'd ask today to approve this $50,000 reward for the, uh, information leading to the arrest and conviction of the suspects involved in the homicide on October 11th, 2012, uh, of Paul T. James in the area of 9632 South Hoover, and the contact for Detective Ovehar is 213-485-4341, and we ask for an aye vote on this item.
Thank you, uh, Mister Parks. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That, that item passes. Okay, Mister Clerk, we do have more than 12 members. Why don't, uh, at this point, you identify the ordinances? Let's vote on reconsideration, and then let us vote on the, uh, the actual measures.
Very good, sir. Those ordinances previously adopted are, are Items 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11, and 12.
Okay, members, this vote is for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mister Clerk, can we just move on all of these items now, or do we have any public comment?
No, sir. Uh, you can, you can vote on them.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, I see that Mister Krikorian is here. Uh, I wanted to ask you how you wanted to proceed, uh, Paul, with the closed session items.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much, Mister President. Uh, Items Number 39 and 38 have been, uh, considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, and, uh, we recommend approval of the recommendations. That can be done in open session. Item 41, Gravina, um, Budget and Finance is also considered, uh, and will be recommending approval of the settlement, but that, uh, should be conducted in closed session.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Mister Clerk, on the, uh, if you could read the items that we're going to vote on in open session.
Very good, sir. Those are Items 39 and 40, uh, for Item 39, in the case entitled, uh, Teresa Iturralde versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $83,000 in settlement. And for Item 40, in the case entitled, John Elder versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $325,000 in settlement.
Okay, so, let's, uh, prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, uh, Mister Clerk, that brings us where on today's agenda?
Mister President, that brings council to, uh, presentations or items called special.
All right, let me, uh, look to my left to see if Mister Bloomingfield would be ready. So at this point, uh, Mister Bloomingfield, the floor is yours.
Get, uh, get the group up here and Captain Egan as well. I'm, Mr. President, colleagues. Uh, today I rise to honor an organization that has set a high bar in the San Fernando Valley for raising community awareness to reduce drug and alcohol among our youth through education, media advocacy, and increased enforcement. Uh, the group is called Saving Lives. Saving Lives and their stated goals are to establish and strengthen, uh, collaboration among Saving Lives partner organizations in support of community efforts to prevent and reduce substance abuse among our youth, to reduce substance abuse among our youth over time, and by extension, reduce it among adults as well. Uh, one of the things they do, they do a lot of very creative efforts, a lot of very clear efforts, uh, and they also work in conjunction, uh, in coordination with, with LAPD, which is why we have, uh, Captain Egan here as well, from our West Valley, uh, Division, who does a fantastic job, uh, in the West Valley. And this is an organization, while I'd like to say that we're the first ones to recognize their amazing work. Um, they've, they have been awarded $625,000 in the past from the Drug-Free Communities Grant by the White House Office of National, uh, Drug Control and SAMSA, the, uh, Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. Among the many things they've done, they've created multifaceted awareness and media campaigns to educate schools, community groups, and the public about youth, drug, and alcohol abuse. Among the many initiatives they have, Super Parents Supervise, a Prescription Drug Lock-It-Up Campaign, and a major underage drinking prevention signage campaign in collaboration with the Alk-, uh, Alcohol Beverage Control, uh, Agency. They work with LAPD, doing decoys, they do a lot of important things to help keep, uh, our youth away from drugs and alcohol. And further efforts fighting drugs and alcohol abuse, making the San Fernando Valley a better place, uh, it's my distinct pleasure to, uh, produce, to, to, to give this award. Uh, this is a certificate on behalf of the City of Los Angeles. It's signed by all of the members of the City Council. Susan, I'd like to give it to you, uh, on behalf of the, the entire group. I also have a number of certificates for individuals here, but I thought, uh, give you a chance to say a few words, and, and Captain Egan, if you want to say a few words as well. So, I'd like to turn it over to Susan Blatter.
Thank you, councilmen. Really appreciate it, and thank you, honored council, for allowing us to be here this morning. We are sincerely and greatly honored. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our great captain, Captain John Egan from West Valley LAPD, who has been so instrumental and supportive and encouraging of our coalition, and has given us strength to continue our work and to go on as we have, uh, throughout the San Fernando Valley. What I would like to mention, as the councilman just mentioned, one of the campaigns that we undertook a few years ago with a kickoff, uh, that the then Assemblyman, uh, was with us on the kickoff, was we initiated for the first time a warning signage, which has not been available in any alcohol establishments. There's tobacco signage, but there is no alcohol warning signage. So Saving Lives, in conjunction with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, came up with this signage in nine languages to show that we are putting these up in stores, which first started out in the San Fernando Valley, and then later moved on to the greater Los Angeles area, and now we are very proud to say is moved out to, uh, counties across the state of California. We are very, very proud of this. I want to take just a moment to thank all the people who work so diligently on our coalition, uh, from our executive committee. Denise Pedro, who is the president of our coalition, and has worked so diligently from the very, very beginning. Uh, all our individuals have a lot of hard work. Janice Boafow, right here, from Tarzana Treatment Center. Carmen Masiglion, from Into Recovery. Um, and Dr. Jeremy Goldbach from, uh, USC, uh, he's a professor at USC. Uh, we have many, many other individuals, which I won't go into their names today. I also want to take this moment to thank Chabata California, Rabbi Cunin, who is the fiscal agent of our coalition, and, uh, it is through them, they wanted to give back to the community at large, that we are able to do our non-denominational, uh, work throughout the entire city of Los Angeles, and we are very, very proud of the work that we do. Just want to say that we represent the youth. We want to make sure that our parents are educated. We are on a huge parent education campaign right now called Super Parents Supervise. We've had billboards going throughout the San Fernando Valley. We are educating parents on what it is with all the different drugs and alcohol, and we hope that our parents will be advised to lock up their alcohol and lock up their meds. Thank you very, very much for this honor.
Captain Egan, I know, I think Captain Egan will say a couple of words as well.
Good morning, councilmembers, and I want to really thank you, Councilmember Bloomingfield, for acknowledging this wonderful organization. I can still remember when I first met Susan. She came to see me, and she was so tenacious and so committed to this program and this process, and trying to impact the young people in the San Fernando Valley. I couldn't say anything, but yes, yes, yes. She has brought together a wonderful coalition of groups. They meet in our police station. We have a lot of involvement with our officers, and I can really see the impact that she's had, that this organization has had, and that this organization will continue to have. The fact that the federal government opted to spend so much money on this important program is a further indication of its value, and she is making sure that she squeezes every single thing that she can out of every penny that comes to this program. So Susan, and the members of your coalition, I just want to say thank you very much for making the San Fernando Valley a safer place and putting our kids first. Thank you.
And we'll do certificates and picture.
Mister Bloomingfield, before you proceed, Mister Englander?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, to rise and say, um, look at the diversity, uh, amongst your group, and that truly represents the city of Los Angeles. We, uh, as a Chair of Public Safety, we often go out there with the Police Department, and, uh, Captain, you've been doing a phenomenal job, and it's been, it's been great to work with you all these years as well. Um, and we go out there and we tout, uh, how low our, our crime statistics are, uh, that we have the safest large city, and we are seeing less crime today in our lifetime than we've ever seen. And it's not because of just the men and women in the Police Department, it's the community, it's the intervention programs, it's the organizations that get involved to make a difference. It's not the responsibility of the Police Department, the first responsibility to an effectuated arrest is to prevent a crime from happening in the first place. And how that happens is working with community, making sure that we get people involved, um, to take up issues that are critically important, whether it's locking up, uh, alcohol and drugs and access to that, prescription drugs, to kids, those are the ones who are going to get in trouble and, um, and get involved in crimes, uh, and ruin lives, quite frankly. And it takes years, if at all, ever to turn those lives back around. And the issues we're dealing with homelessness, and that's ultimately where they end up, in jail, in a hospital, uh, or on the streets. And so, you're saving lives, you're keeping the crime down, you're making a difference. God bless you, and I want to thank, uh, Bob Bloomingfield for bringing you here, for working with you, continuing his work that he's done, um, with you in the Assembly, and then, you know, um, making that commitment to continue doing it now. He's doing a great job working with organizations, and, uh, I wanted to thank you all and appreciate everything you're doing. God bless you. Thank you.
Mister Bloomingfield, back to you.
No, just, let's just give a big hand to Saving Lives.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Mister Krikorian, would, would you like to proceed? At this point, I'd like to give the floor to Paul Krikorian.
Thank you, Mister President. Uh, good morning, and I'd like to ask, uh, my guest to join me here at the podium. Uh, members, it's, uh, a real honor, but kind of a sad honor for me, uh, to recognize the service of the outgoing Consul General of Canada, David Franson, who's leaving us after, uh, almost six years of service here in Los Angeles. Uh, years of extraordinary service, where the relationship between Canada and California, and particularly Los Angeles, has blossomed in a way that, um, I had not previously seen it. And the relationships that have been built under the Consul General's, uh, leadership have really, uh, been extraordinarily mutually beneficial, both for the government of Canada and for Southern California. Consul General Franson has a long and distinguished career in public service, uh, prior to his, his arrival here in Los Angeles. He's a historian by trade and, uh, served as the Associate Vice President of the University of Waterloo, uh, where he also became the Executive Director for the Institute for Quantum Computing. And who hasn't done that at some point in their lives? Um, he served He served as one of the leading environmental advocates in the Canadian government. He was the Senior Officer for the Environment, and then moved on to become Director General of the Centre for Healthy Human Development at Health Canada, where he led in the development of federal and provincial agreements on early childhood development, a national diabetes strategy, and a national cancer control strategy. Following that, the Consul General went on to become Assistant Deputy Minister at Industry Canada, and was responsible for Canada's innovation strategy. He was responsible for policies relating to Canada's participation in the online world, and devoted his time to the auto, aerospace, and defense, life sciences, clean tech, tourism, and manufacturing sectors. And that background actually has paid dividends for the people of Southern California, because the Consul General brought that background here, and through that experience, has, as I mentioned, developed extraordinary relationships with the business community here in California that have allowed foreign investment, that have allowed trade opportunities, and tremendous mutual benefit for both governments. It was my great pleasure to get to know Consul General Fransen when I was a member of the State Legislature, and when I was spearheading environmental initiatives around renewable energy there, and worked collaboratively with the Government of Canada, and it was a great pleasure to be able to continue to work with him here as a member of the City Council. I just have to say that David Fransen has really elevated and improved the relationship between Los Angeles and Canada. It is a relationship that I have very much valued, and David, you will certainly be missed, but I know that in your next position, you'll have an opportunity to continue to work with us here in Southern California, and I'm pleased to recognize your great service to the Government of Canada, and to the Canadian population of Southern California, and also thank you for the collaboration that you've always engaged upon to benefit the people, all of the people of Southern California as well. So, I want to bid you a fond farewell and adieu, and I look forward to working with you in your next capacity as well. So, congratulations, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian.
And on behalf of the people of the City of Los Angeles, to Consul General David Fransen, I'd like to present this resolution in thanks and appreciation for your great service. Thank you very much.
Mr. Krikorian, I'd like to call on this council's Consul General and Ambassador to say a few words, Tom Labange.
Mr. President, Mr. President, you're too nice, but thank you. Paul, what a great presentation, David, thank you for all your service diplomatically. The Canadians are some of our absolute greatest friends. We have a sister city in Vancouver, and if you haven't got there, get there, to learn so many things they do in that city and transforming it, which is such a key there. Our Olympic relationship with Vancouver and Calgary, as well as Montreal, Montreal preceded us in 76 when we won the bid for the 84 Games, which was so special, all the work. But the best thing is I, I think I got the word to your nation's capital there, that the Canadians wanted to sell the house that historically has been the home of their Consul General for years and years. And let me tell you, I think it's the best home in the center part of the city, as it is, right off Rossmore Avenue. And we were able to turn around Toronto, is that right? Is that our, not Toronto, but I got my T on it because of the...
Toronto's a work in progress.
Toronto's a work in progress, I got that. I turned it around, but with your leadership, to say that, because it's a great place to hear about what's going on in Canada, and the relationships and receptions that are many friends there. So, I just wanted to stand and salute you, as well as the Vancouver Sister City Committee, and wish you well in all your future endeavors. And to my colleagues, if you haven't been there, get up there, because it's a wonderful place to learn about a lot of things that we want to do that they've already done. Thank you, thank you, Paul, thank you, David.
Back to you, Consul General, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do appreciate this, and I'll try to be very brief. I want to thank, first of all, Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Labange for the kind words. As city, as councilors know, serving the public is an honor, it's a privilege. When you get to serve in another country, it's a particular honor, even when that country feels as much like home as home does. And coming to LA for me has basically represented the third time that I've fallen in love. The first time was more than 40 years ago to the woman who remains my wife. The second time is when I took my first ride on a motorcycle, and the third time is when I arrived in Los Angeles. And six years ago, the beginnings of that feeling were based on climate and the absence of bugs. It very quickly became a function of a growing sense of the diversity and the amazing robustness of what LA is. And finally, it's become grounded very much in personal relationships. And what LA has become to my wife and myself is a home. It's a place where we have very dear friends, and we're very sad to be leaving, and the only reason we're leaving is because we have some family obligations back in Canada. But as Paul alluded to, my intention is to set up a business that keeps me coming back here and keeps on doing what I'm doing, which is trying to establish as much as possible the connections between Canada and Los Angeles. So, again, thank you very much for being a home, and thank you very much for this recognition.
And good luck to you in the future. Mr. Coretz, in a very few minutes, will be taking up some of the items of your concern, but I want to get, take care of a little bit of business here. We're going to go quickly to item two, which was called "Special" by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, item two.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, or twittering at, or twittering and tweeting at Hollywood Dems, capital H for Hollywood, and two D's in the middle. Number two is improvement and maintenance of Mesa Avenue, New York Boulevard, street lighting. There was a recent story, since you got rid of carbon arcs and went, and you were one of the first cities to do this, and you've done a good job, and have gone to a digital lighting, sometimes known as LED lighting, it's been like the difference, the difference of night and day. Many people feel that they're paying too much for this privilege, but in case, in any case, it's working. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. Members, let's prepare to vote on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Sacks, if you could come forward, we're going to go to item 13. Called "Special" by Mr. Arnold Sacks. Arnold, please come forward.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Arnold Sacks. I held this, actually, it's easement for sanitary sewer purposes, no big thing. My concerns is not necessarily the property on Cobalt Street, south of Foothill Boulevard, right away, which would be the sidewalk, right? Because that's how you identify right away in your legal proceedings. But more or less, does this sewer affect any of the street? Do these sewer lines affect any of the street? You may be surprised, but there's a couple of council people that want to do a street initiative. They raised $3 billion, give or take a couple pennies here or there, to redo the streets. My concerns are the infrastructure under the streets. We've heard some problems there, water mains and sewer lines breaking. Which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Do you do the streets? And the way the City Council and its administrative work goes, as soon as the street is paved, then we come up and dig for the sewers? Or do you do the sewers and come up and dig for the streets? So, you have this initiative to repave the streets, but you don't have an initiative to repay or redo the sewer lines. So, again, it comes up to the point where, which one do you want to do first? Do you want to do the streets and then redo the sewer lines? Or do you want to do the sewer lines and that infrastructure, and then do the streets? Because one way or the other, or either or, how you want to say it, the public's going to pay, but nobody is discussing that. Nobody is discussing the infrastructure under the streets, they're discussing the infrastructure of the streets. So, that really is my concern here, to get some discussion by the public on what they want done, because you're hearing about the sidewalks too, which is a totally different infrastructure.
Thank you, Arnold. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's go to item 37, called "Special" by Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or twittering at Hollywood Dems, capital H. Okay, this is number 37. This concerns exemptions, re-exemptions. Now, I don't think people out there understand what an exemption is. In New York City, the mayor of that city has hundreds of jobs that he gives out directly. You don't have to go through civil service, you don't have to go, that's what this is. This is an exemption, which means the Deputy Director of Planning is hired directly by the mayor. Could be anyone, he can have a child molesting record, it doesn't matter, as one of his appointments, kitty porn record as one of the mayor's appointments did. The point I'm making is you have, in LA, a handful of these exemptions, these corrupt exemptions, where the mayor decides who works for the city, and the process is short-circuited. How, just a few. In New York, you have hundreds, thousands, and in Chicago. This was done by the people who founded this city to get rid of, to prevent corrupt mayors. What does the re-exemption mean? It means that the Deputy Director of Planning could have a criminal record, could have anything, doesn't have to show up, we have no idea. It's a re-exemption because they have to pass this again and again. It's corruption, it's city by mayor, not city by law. The unions hate it, the right wing hates it, the left wing hates it. Re-exemption, and they're not going to talk about it because I know that one of these members of the City Council is the godfather of this person, Deputy Director of Planning. Exemptions are corrupt. Go by the law. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. If you would refrain from applauding, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll move to item 38, called "Special" by Herman. Please come forward, item 38.
I'm getting there, I'm moving slow, I'm going to hold my time on this, I only utilize less than my one minute.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
We'll move quickly to item 10, Mr. Arnold Sacks and Ms. Ramirez, please come forward. In fact, you're closer, Ms. Ramirez, so you can go first if you'd like. Item 10. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. It's a relatively simple item, which is really what's being left for the community to talk about, which is somewhat unfortunate, but that's a different story. It's improvement and maintenance, and yet, when it'll come back before the council, it'll just be for the maintenance of the lighting district without the improvement. And if anybody knows with their personal property, if they do improvement to the property, they're assessed at a higher rate. To do these street lighting maintenance and improvement districts, you know, you just had an item on your agenda on Tuesday regarding the streetcar, and you were going to use $1 million in AB 1290 funds. Why not allocate those funds to the neighborhood councils, and let them not only do the improvement to the street lighting district, but to look into some of the maintenance on the sidewalks? It's enough, I believe Mr. Busciano just had a story in the newspaper about who should pay for it. The funding is there, it's just that people aren't aware, or they're not concerned, or whatever. But if you're interested in the improvement, start being interested in the funding that goes to your council districts, not from the general fund, not from funds that are sent to the city, but of funds that are generated by the street, by the bus bench revenue, AB 1290 revenue, the sanitation revenue, the different sources that are directly funneled into the council district, council district offices. Those are funds that should be used for these districts, the street lighting revenues.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Ms. Ramirez.
Good morning, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, you want the improvement in maintenance on Harzuk and Cleon Avenue, including the lighting. I say no, 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 not until you get rid of all the Latino and Hispanic gangbangers and all illegal felons, because if you know most of the crimes are being committed...
Ms. Ramirez, stay to the, on the item.
We're doing that, and I would recommend that you stay to the item, and that is a lawful...
No, no, you're not on the, okay, thank you very much, your last warning, stay on the item.
Quit censoring people, okay?
No, stay on the item, okay, thank you.
I say quit censoring people.
Thank you, let's prepare to vote, sergeants, help her understand that her time is over. Okay, and you're disrupting the meeting now, and that must stop. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, we're going to go to item one, Mr. Walsh, item one, Mr. Herman, item one. Mr. Walsh passes, Mr. Herman, item one. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
I would like to remind all you Angelenos, all of you who love bees, to know this for a fact, that this practice by extortion, by building in safety on liens is unacceptable. And we, the American people, we, the people of Los Angeles, want you to explain, how do you come up with all these liens and violations against your constituents? It's horrible, it's flat-out arrogance and ignorance on your part to put people in a prediction, as I call it, a practice of organized crime, which means an infliction on something or pain and suffering, or best said, an unpleasant lien. You're robbing the public. As I mentioned yesterday, it's predatory, it's verbal, and it's written. Look at all these liens, one for almost $101,039 from what, Law Office of John M. Richardson's. And what about Infinity Auto Park? And what about LAX Incorporated for $1 million, $62,000? This is ridiculous. I demand... I demand an audit on behalf of the public, that there be an investigation by the attorney general's office, by the city attorney's office, especially because the city attorney is always here in council chambers. Take action on behalf of all the constituents, all you Angelinos, everyone in Los Angeles. Are you hearing this? Why do we have these liens against us at a time when the hardships of our own struggle with the economy affects us and making payments? I know I'm not talking out of my mind. Many of you right now are living in your homes that are being foreclosed. And the reason? Illegal liens, illegal liens, illegal liens, illegal liens.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, at this time, if you're ready, we'd like to go to, I think we can put all of these items together. We can do 18, 20, and 36. I just need to know, Mr. Coretts, thumbs up, or you want to wait? Okay. So at this time, Mr. Clerk, we're going to deal with items 18, 20, and 36, and we'll deal with them all together. Okay, so, Mr. Coretts, we have some cards. So what I'm going to do is call, we'll deal with the cards first, and then we'll go to you. I've got a Rob McFarland, Chelsa McFarland, Paul, I'm going to have you come forward from Honeylove. I'm going to have you pronounce your last name. But if we could start off with, identify yourself, sir.
My name is Rob McFarland.
Welcome.
Chelsea McFarland, Honeylove.org.
Okay.
And Paul Hakimian.
Ah, okay, I'll get it the next time. Okay, go right ahead.
Bees are in real trouble, and urban beekeeping is part of the solution. We've been working for three years now on the grassroots level in each of your communities in support of urban beekeeping. And today, we're here to urge you to vote yes, to study the feasibility of urban beekeeping in our communities, because we're confident that they will come back with a recommendation that urban beekeeping is not only feasible, but the right thing to do.
So, on average, there's between nine to 11 colonies of bees. We learned that through the feasibility study in Mar Vista. We had the L.A. County come out and talk to us about it. And so they said there are nine to 11 colonies of bees living in every square mile of Los Angeles. And of those, it's 90% of mixed genetics. So what we're seeing, if you've ever seen a bee out in your garden, these are the bees that we're dealing with here already naturally. So what we want to do is help make the city safer by providing a permanent habitat for bees and supporting them overall. And we think urban beekeeping is a great way to help with colony collapse disorder as well. Thank you so much for your time.
No, thank to both of you, and thanks for meeting with my office. Yes, sir.
I'm Paul Hakimian, like I said. I'm an actual urban beekeeper. I'm a second-generation beekeeper. I live in Santa Monica, where we do have an ordinance, and it's working. I'm saving the bees in our neighborhood. I'm educating our environment and the neighbors around me that bees are safe. And I want you guys to get behind this, because I have two kids, and my kids play around with the bees. Bees are safe. And I think if we educate the city of Los Angeles that bees are not going to go out and attack you, they're going to actually do so well, because...
No, go on. Go on, that's three of you.
Thank you.
Finish your statement.
Yeah, so, like I said, I'm an urban beekeeper. I support Honeylove.org, and I urge you guys to vote yes on this measure and let the bees be. Thank you.
No, thank you for coming down. Sharon Cummings, Florence Neshida, well, you can help me out. Okay. Anisha from the L.A. Food Policy Council. And if you could just identify yourself and then proceed.
Hi, Sharon Cummins, Chair of Mar Vista Community Council, proud early adopters of this legislation. The feasibility was studied, was done in our neighborhood council. We support this legislation, and we urge an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Florence Neshida, thank you very much, councilman, president, and council members. I'm a master gardener. I teach gardening at the Natural History Museum, and I'm always teaching the children, as well as the adult members of the family, how important the bees are. The collapse of the bees in Los Angeles City is quite visible. I walked by a lemon tree the other day in full bloom and in great fragrance, and not a single bee there. So the bees really need our help. They have been helping us pollinate our food, our crops, and our flowers as well. So the more bees that we have in the city, and if people are allowed to maintain bees, it's very, very easy to teach the public how to stay calm around bees. There's no necessity for people to get excited about them. It's quite safe to have them around. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Next, please come forward.
Good morning. Anisha Hingarani from the Los Angeles Food Policy Council. The Urban Agriculture Working Group of the Los Angeles Food Policy Council understands that residential beekeeping in the city of Los Angeles can be a vital part of a resilient and local food system that benefits residents and our natural environment. The Los Angeles Food Policy Council has facilitated the Urban Agriculture Working Group, because we understand that urban food production is a critical food access strategy that can bring fresh nutritious fruits and vegetables to communities that lack healthier options. And we can't talk about food without talking about bees. Bees are vital to food growing. They provide a host of ecological benefits through pollination and economic development opportunities, through the production of honey and other value-added products. The U.S. is currently facing a dwindling stock of honeybee colonies. And on the other hand, the biodiversity of the flora and fauna in urban neighborhoods supports healthy colonies in the city of Los Angeles. Plenty of other cities, large cities, including New York, Seattle, Atlanta, Chicago, San Francisco, have all updated their policies to allow for urban beekeeping. And the three policies being discussed today can provide our communities with the resource to humanely and sustainably maintain these healthy bee populations. And so I'd like to thank Honeylove for their tireless efforts, and the council members Coretts, LeBange, Bonin, O'Farrell, and Weezear for their leadership on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is it Adele Wilcox? If you're here, please come forward. Mr. Sachs? Mr. Wilcox? Mr. Herman? Okay, Mr. Walsh, looks like you're the first one up.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't know if it's true, but I understand, I heard that somebody has released a bee in this room. I'm not sure if that's true. Now, listen, you heard someone get up here, Mr. Wesson, and say, "I allow my children to play with bees." Now, I just want to say to every parent, bees are dangerous. Bees sting. People die from bee stings. I want every single member of the city council who has never been stung by a bee, raise your hand. Nobody raised their hand. You can be hospitalized by bees, and we're going to do a study? I'm not interested in insect liberation. I am interested, and we are interested, in human liberation. And if these bee lovers can, if these bee lovers, there's one around here someplace, if they want to play with their bees, play with them inside a locked room. I'm telling you right now, the bees can take care of themselves. They've been here for tens of thousands of years. And I understand that this so-called bee study is going to cost us a half a million dollars. And where will that half a million dollars come from? It will come out of the money that's supposed to be for human liberation of homeless in Skid Row. I mean, really? Really? At long last, aren't you ashamed of yourselves for presenting propaganda that bees are harmless, that stings are harmless? And if I'm wrong, I want any one of you to get up and say, "John Walsh is wrong. Bees love people. You are in no danger." You have a chance, Mr. Krikory and Mr. Coretts, you all have a chance to say what I said, to say bees are lovable. They won't sting you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. It's good you have this, able to get the phone system working, get these people down here for this item. But I'm just wondering, the Bureau of Street Services, they must have a list of 100 and 200 items on their agenda, how this one jumps to the top of the list for bees? And how do you distinguish between African honeybees and regular honeybees? And how do you distinguish between eliminating some and not eliminating others? And it was touched on. Nuisance bee colonies make them into homeless. There's nuisance homeless that have moved around the city. They get treated worse than any insects in the world. If you could establish the time to have a hearing in here, in your council chambers, on relocating the homeless, that would be an achievement. The bees, they're going to be here.
Thank you. Are you Mr. Wilcox? Followed by Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Yeah. Hello, Dale Wilcox, The Natural Honey Company. I'm concerned. I mentioned back in December that it is not illegal to keep bees. I just spoke with Chelsea McFarland and asked why she is continuing to try to move this measure forward. She says, "Well, we just want to erase the gray area." As an educator, as a credentialed California teacher, I like to educate people. Rather than spending government time, our city emotions and city time, to put it on the books, to say it's an approved activity, it's simply just to say, put up a stop sign or put up a 55 mile an hour sign to remind people that it's 55 miles an hour, and just simply put some information out there to tell people that it is not illegal to keep bees in R1 zones. I would like to have the L.A. County, I mean, the L.A. City Municipal Code as it is, to let it be. I don't see a lot of heavy financial statements that have been, that have been put on the website. I don't see independent research done, other than a community council has submitted an article or a resolution. And if the city is going to back this huge commitment to put itself liable for keeping bees with a simple study like this, I think it's inappropriate to vote on that particular measure. Dale Wilcox will be running the L.A. Marathon to promote bee awareness for the rescuing of bees in a humane way in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman?
I released a bee, and I saved the world. I flowered flowers by pollinating bees to pollinate flowers, and they grow beautiful trees. How reluctant. But Mr. Englander made a good point. He said, for the record, homelessness, and based on this item here, it says, relative to the humane treatment of homeless nuisance rescue and relocation practiced by the city, I find that discouraging, because homeless people need the same attention our bees do today.
Stay on the item.
I'm on bees. I'm on bees, Mr. Herman. I'm on bees. And the result of killing a bee is the same as saying you're going to kill every tree and every plant that this city covers up with cement. All the time, throughout the city, we find cement gardens. Why not allow the bees to be? And be quiet for a while and listen to the bee people here today, because they have good points. I'm not afraid of bees, because I have a problem with bees. Not that I dislike bees. But Mr. Herman uses this as an education tool to teach you that you can practice saving your life by being killed by not one bee, but a bee. And Mr. Coretts, if I'm ever unconscious and on the ground, please go in my bag and save me. A human being, a bee, a homeless bee in Los Angeles. So all you Angelinos that love bees and love homeless people on our streets, do something about it. Because that's the practice of being heard here in council chambers, is to promote equality to not just bees, equality to homelessness. And so, for the record, Mr. Englander, homelessness should be a priority, not by you, but by every council member here, to save a bee and save a homeless person from the streets.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coretts, we'll start with you. That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, for hearing these important items today. The syndrome known as colony collapse disorder is having a devastating effect on our bees in this country and worldwide. We've been losing about a third of our bees a year since 2006. This year is even worse. Beekeepers are reporting a loss of 45% of their bees. This puts our long-term food security at risk, because pollinators are vital to our food supply and to our agriculture and California's economy. They pollinate over a third of what we eat. They improve over 75% of all crop species, and they're critical to key crops like avocados and almonds. And almonds alone are $4 billion of our state's economy. The primary suspect for colony collapse is neonicotinoid, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, pesticides, which affect the bees' nervous systems and their memory. They essentially fly off and never come back to the hive, which is why they seem to just disappear. Bees are not the only insects impacted by these pesticides. The New York Times reported last week that we had a record-low 60 million monarch butterflies migrating to the U.S. from Mexico, and this year, that dropped to 3 million. These pesticides are the prime suspects. The European Food Safety Authority concluded that these pesticides pose a high risk to pollinators, and on December 1st, the European Union began a two-year ban on these pesticides. In an attempt to address this growing problem in the U.S., two members of Congress, Congress Member Conyers and Blumenauer, introduced HR 2692, which calls for a suspension of these same pesticides. So I urge your i-vote for this item. No less than Albert Einstein prognosticated that if honeybees disappeared in the world, that the human race would follow a few years later. Now, the interesting thing is that in Los Angeles, bees are thriving. And I believe it's because these pesticides are not present, because we don't engage in large-scale agriculture using these bees, I mean, using these pesticides. And so, it's critical that we do more to protect the bees that are thriving here locally. One of those ways is the item brought to us by Councilmember Weezear, to remove bees more humanely and to rescue them rather than to exterminate them. The Bureau of Street Services reported to my staff that one of the ways they deal with bee hives is they cut them down in an open box, they throw them in the back of a pickup truck, and they drive around until all the bees fly off. That may seem like an okay idea, but in reality, it's quite cruel, because bees are an integrated, integrated living organism. When they're separated from the queen and the hive, they just fly around and die within three days. They don't find another hive. And so, we need to find a better way. And that better way is to find best practices to rescue and replace these hives. And I thank Councilmember Weezear for proposing this. We also can do more to protect and help to replicate these hives. And so, I appreciate Councilmember Rosendahl, and now Councilmember Bonin, moving forward with the idea of allowing bee colonies in R1 zones. If we pass all these measures, we'll take a big step in the right direction to try to protect the honeybees in the city of Los Angeles and at least guarantee that in one place in the world that we have a thriving honeybee population.
Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Coretts referred to my predecessor, Mr. Rosendahl, and his support for this. Mr. Rosendahl was chief of staff when... It was Mr. Rosendahl's Chief of Staff when he came in one morning and said, I want to legalize, uh, urban beekeeping in Los Angeles. And I'll be honest, I reacted not particularly enthusiastically. I rolled my eyes and I was like, what are you getting, are getting us into now? And then I listened. And then I heard about what this is really about. And this is about our food. If, if honeybees disappear and their colonies continue to diminish as they are in places other than Los Angeles, our food supply is threatened. According to a cover story in Time Magazine last August, honeybees, which pollinate crops like apples and blueberries and cucumbers, are responsible for about one-third, one-third of the food we eat. Everyone in LA, including and especially people who eat locally grown foods and try to eat healthfully and organically, as, as, as a lot of folks do, deserve access to nutritious and affordable health food, and urban beekeeping allows Angelenos to grow food safely, locally, with the help of honeybees. As Mr. Coretts said, LA has a healthy honeybee population. There's between nine and 11 bee colonies per square mile in LA, and it's necessary to keep it that way if we want to be growing healthy food opportunities here in LA. Much like the food that we're seeking to protect, the movement for urban beekeeping here in Los Angeles began in our neighborhoods, organically. It started with Rob and Chelsea McFarland from CD11 and Mar Vista. It was quickly embraced and endorsed by the Mar Vista Community Council in my district. Mr. Rosendahl himself already has honeybees on his property and is using it to help beautify his garden at home. Honeybees also help make our neighborhoods more beautiful because they pollinate the flowers that grow in our yards, on our medians that we're trying to make look more beautiful for our communities and for our neighborhoods. So nearly two dozen neighborhood councils have called on the council to allow urban beekeeping in their neighborhoods. New York has done this. Denver has done this. Other cities have done this, and it's time to do it in Los Angeles so we can give our neighborhoods what they're asking for. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Coretts and my other colleagues for moving forward this package of legislation. And, um, you know, this package of legislation is really, uh, a package that helps support some of our other local food policies that we have proposed. It's in line with that, and it's also in line with ensuring that we not only protect bees, but we protect our economy. It's surprising to me when I first learned that today, we are importing bees from New Zealand and Australia, simply to help our almond industry in the, the state of California. It was surprising to me that other cities and other jurisdictions have done a much better job than us in making sure that we contribute to ensuring that we have a healthy bee population. So when we first, first heard about this, I had the same reaction as Councilmember Bonin. But when you hear the facts and you weigh the costs and benefits, uh, we quickly, and we should, move, uh, quickly to ensure that we do our part in ensuring a healthy bee population. We introduced a motion to ensure that if either the county or we should encourage a county, or if it's the city going out to see bee colonies in the city of LA, that we not simply go out there and exterminate them or terminate them, but find alternative ways of perhaps transform, transporting them to another, another place where they could continue to do their work. This idea came to me when, in fact, I moved to my Bull Heights home and, uh, in the back wall, which had several colonies, quite a bit of bees buzzing around, um, I called the county and the county came and simply terminated, exterminated the bees. Uh, and when you hear about the need to continue supporting our bees, we must do something else. So thank you for, uh, doing this. I think at the end of the day, uh, through this, we will have a healthier economy, we will have a healthier agricultural, uh, business in the state of California, and we will also overall have healthier human beings. Thank you very much again, Mr. Coretts, for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, thank you very much. And Mr. Coretts, thank you as always. Second to that, want to ask a question, just, uh, we're no, looking just not at R1 zones, but are all, all R zones, or how are we defining that? So...
Uh, the, the item that's before us is just looking at R1 zones.
Why don't we just look at all R zones, just to make sure, as long as, because bees know no zones, in the sense whether it's R1, R2, R3, R4. Uh, you know, just, just from a factor, just a friendly amendment, whatever works. And then also the other issue too, work with the Los Angeles County Agriculture Department, vector control, just so we're in the same page and try to push them to the right page. And lastly, I just want to say, 1960, members of council, the number one industry in Los Angeles County was agriculture. 1960, that's 50 years ago, 54 years ago, and how fast it has changed. Where, uh, anybody know where Dairy Valley was at all in Los Angeles County? City of Cerritos. You know, there was 100,000 cow there and now there's 50,000 people. So whatever, there is a chance, if we work it right, to make sure everybody wins on it. So, Mr. Coretts, if we could look at that, make sure Planning Department look at that. And also, we work with, uh, the county agencies because it does affect our border cities. What we do in Los Angeles affects San Fernando, West Hollywood, Glendale, Compton, Long Beach, et cetera. So I think that's good. Thank you. Ask for an i-vote.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Could I get the city staff to come up? I just had a couple of questions of, for those who are gonna do the study.
Do we have the city staff? There's been a request. Okay, here we are.
Thank you. I just would like to give you a couple of things that have come from my community that asked that, when you're doing this study, that are incorporated, uh, whether, uh, this is going to be a individual or commercial business that's gonna be allowed to occur in residential neighborhoods? And if it's gonna be commercial, how does that conflict with doing commercial business in residential neighborhoods? Is there going to be permits required? If, uh, and also, is there gonna be posting if they're commercial operations, so people know that there's a commercial, uh, business going on? And also, uh, how we're going to address potential health issues because, as mentioned earlier, the potential of bee stings and people that are allergic to bee stings? And also whether there's, uh, in the sense of how we're gonna educate the public and addressing, uh, the hazards of being attacked by bees? And so those are things that they've asked for. We've gotten, uh, a couple of, and I think on the last time this came forward, we asked for, and I believe it's in council file, uh, documentary that came through from, uh, the National Geographic, and then a, a constituent, uh, a long-distance constituents from Manhattan Beach sent us two more studies that we'd like to give you, that they said are available, that talk about, uh, vanishing bees and more than honey, so they can be incorporated to get the best and most in-depth analysis when this comes back. And if I understand, both motions are asking for a study as opposed to that we're implementing an ordinance. Okay, thank you. That's the things that we've asked. If you can pull all that together and answer those questions. Thank you.
And that's on the report back, Mr. Parks. Yes. Thank you very much. Mr. Englander.
Yeah, thank you. And, Mr. President, uh, I'd ask that, I'm sure you're gonna look into putting "I'm a Bee" by Black Eyed Peas on music on hold at the city of LA.
I know, I was gonna, instead of Black Eyed Peas, I was going with the Rolling Stones.
There we go. And, uh, Mr. Coretts, I want to thank you for swarming around this issue, because it's really appalling that, it, you know, well, no, I want to say that, um...
Mitch Englander will be at the Holiday Inn.
Whether your vote is to be or not to be on this, I think if we don't vote for it, it would be a buzzkill. And, um, and if we don't do it, quite frankly, it'll come back and sting us all. So, um, I want to thank, uh, our honey on the city council, Mr. Paul Coretts. Thank you.
Right. Mitch Englander, very good. Mitch Englander will be at the Granada Hills Holiday Inn this Saturday night. Two shows at 7:30 and 9:30. Very good. No other speakers on the queue? So, uh, let's go forward and, uh, Mr. Coretts to close.
Uh, I would just like to ask, uh, Mr. Parks and Mr. Englander to let it be. Oh, sorry. And I will be gone. I will just ask for an i-vote on this important measure.
I vote. All right, here we go. We got our back to business, Mr. Clerk. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes. So ordered forthwith. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item 33, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman, followed by Ms. Ramirez. Mr. Walsh, are they out of time? Mr. Walsh, you're out of time. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Your card will be in the file. Mr. Herman, you're out of time. Your card will be added to the file. Ms. Ramirez.
We are asking, we are asking the city attorneys to implement ethics and in the city council chambers, as well as with your council members. Again, several of your council members have violated your ethics, and that includes Herb Wesson and, uh, several of the Latinos who have continuously and repeatedly violated me the right to freely speak uncensored and denied me to speak on any agenda item. And I get that every single week from Herb Wesson, who is a racist black, and the Latinos.
He is, she is not talking about this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Talk about the item. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, excuse me?
Talk about the item.
Uh, I am speaking under the item, and again, we're talking about ethics and the city attorney. And, uh, when you say C E C, again, this, this item is vague and ambiguous. It doesn't get to the really root core of what it is. What's the verb here? Um, again, you're, you're basically glossing over this agenda item. Communications, yeah, we're talking about communications in the city council. Ethics, we need ethics in the city. Many of you are not sticking to ethics. You're too busy censoring. You're too busy attacking. Let's stick to the business at hand, and that is ethics. You cannot possibly perform your jobs without ethics or balls. And that needs a man or a woman who has integrity, who has guts, who stands for right and wrong. And you're gonna get people who are gonna attack you, and you're gonna get people who are gonna applaud you. Take your pick. And again, we need to clean up LA. That includes the city attorney's office. And again, you're not laughing at me, city attorney, you're laughing at yourself, because it ain't me. I'm here, again, not making a penny, but to me, this is a matter of justice, integrity, and that my parents taught me, okay? And I am not a butt kisser. Thank you very much. Deport, deport.
That completes the public comment. Uh, Mr. Clerk, there's no speakers on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
All right, we're gonna go to item... General public comment at this time. Sergeant, will you call, uh, the city attorney's office and tell them to report? Arnold Sacks.
Actually, the outside counsel is on his way.
Very good.
Just thank you, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. And, um, you know, the DWP has been in the news. Anybody read the newspaper on, um, last week? Cow fire told to pay $32 million fine from the Attorney General's office. Cow fire stashed about $3.66 million from legal settlements in a wildlife fire training and equipment fund. How ironic that they're told to pay. DWP is stashing money in a training fund, a nonprofit, and you're gonna investigate. How ironic. This letter that, uh, Brian Darcy wrote to the, the op-ed from Thursday, February 6th, he mentions that he is, um, that the I B E W Local 18 and the DWP formed this trust. But they didn't form a trust. They didn't form it. And if they did, how come it's funded with public money? It's a nonprofit, not the same thing. Maybe you could clarify that. This is kind of reminiscent, remember Councilman Bond, you were around? I don't know any other, when the DWP had that fiasco where they were going out to lunch and spending a couple of hundred thousand dollars, a couple of thousand dollars on meals, writing them off on the city's tab? So they form a nonprofit so they can do the same thing, only they funnel the expenses through the nonprofit. It's amazing. This is a little story from, um, 616. It mentions that 9 to 14% of overhead should be used by the nonprofit. Brian says they're spending 25% on their administration. That's over 10% higher than normal. Why don't you investigate?
Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Twitter account, uh, at HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Here's the hard news. The earthquake, the Hollywood Fault earthquake trenching has begun at the corner of Yucca and Argyle. There's absolutely no supervision of it. We're talking about, if you go out there right now, and we have, we're posting these pictures on our website, you will see a mountain at the corner of, of Yucca and Argyle of dirt. I'm telling you about 80 to 90 feet of dirt and a deep pit. It's not being covered, it's not being supervised, and the underground spores containing valley fever, every car that passes it, every person that passes it, the wind, valley fever is being spread. Now, the media has not covered this. Now, if I'm making this up and people go out there and there is at the corner of Yucca and Argyle, no gigantic Hollywood trenching site, then my credibility is gone. If it's there, then how come you didn't know about it? How come Garcetti okayed it secretly? The state doesn't know about it. The New York Times doesn't know about it. It's now three days, they're moving earth there, and they're doing a gigantic trench, and who is paying for it? This is, these are the lives of everybody who lives in Hollywood. Why is the trench unsupervised? They've closed the street, there's all sorts of, no LAPD. Go out there, media, and see it. They are digging the Hollywood earthquake fault trench. It's an 80-foot hole, uh, 80-foot-high dirt mound. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Dave, why?
I just made it up.
Wilcox? Is there a Wilcox here? No Wilcox, no Dee Wilcox? So, Antonio Ramirez?
Uh, your council member, Mitchell Englander, says that crime is down and that the LAPD has done a great job. That is untrue, a blatant lie. These dirty racist rogue rentacops, like the West LAPD, Rampart PD, and the LAPD, have engaged in obstruction of justice, corruption, not to mention human rights violations against legal law-abiding American citizens, who treat us as second-class citizens, i.e. Sergeant Walker, Sergeant Abbott and McCarthy, with the exception of two fine officers, Officer Morris and Officer Duarte. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Further, Herb Wesson, who is a racist black and an on-and-ego trip, has failed to perform his objective public service. Herb Wesson has repeatedly denied me the right to speak freely and uncensored. Had I censored him, he would call his homies, the NAACP, Al Sharpton, Jesse Jackson, the Black Caucus, Obama, Eric Holder, and Aunt Jemima. We need to give Herb Wesson the royal boot out. He is, he is unethical and he is a pandering pussy with no integrity. Herb Wesson has much, Herb Wesson, we'd like to know how much money you're making under the table. Oh, shut the hell up. Again, um, we have an urban, a toxic urban blight, and again, this is what Herb Wesson incites, racism and attacks against Mexican law-abiding citizens. And that's why we have the Zimmerman case, and you wonder why we get attacked and we don't get the right to speak because we get censored by blacks. And when we speak against the black, we get attacked by the audience, okay? That is what you incite, and you wonder why this happens. Next one, there's gonna be riots breaking out thanks to you, and they're gonna be chasing you down. you down First Street. And having said that, ladies and...
Hold your time, hold your time, hold your time.
Oh, LaBonde, are you ass licking now? Obviously, thank you.
Complete her comment, Mr. City...
Mr. President, the speaker should know that when she's speaking on agenda items, she can be asked to keep to the topic. In general, this last comment was general public comment, and you're given more latitude. That's the difference.
General public comment means general public comment. Don't pervert what general comment means. I believe, and in behalf of Ms. Ramirez, everything she said was right. Racist discrimination and harassment by local officials because of their organized crime. Organized crime, yes. It's treason. When you become a traitor, a traitor and interrupt as you're speaking about this issue right now, why don't you have a seat? Come on, what's this all about? You talk about us being interrupting? Look at this. It's a good example, Mr. City Attorney. It's a status quo. We, the general public, are not a part of the status quo. Treason, because at eighteen-hundred South Hope Street, at four hundred block of Washington Boulevard, homeless people there are denied a home. At what discretion? Your discretion, because you have not input an idea, a transition for homeless people who are obviously on the streets. The difficulty of you taking on an action for homelessness is a disregard to public interest. And again, Ms. Ramirez can say the hell she wants during general public comment. This is why I get upset, because you caused me to use language that I'm not even used to. And going back to the subject on bees, I'll let you know, I'll be the first one making a claim against the city, because you said it's okay to have bees in our backyards. But there are people like myself who can be killed by just one bee sting. And I'm gonna hold the councilmen responsible when I get bee-stung, that when I'm in the hospital, you personally will be accountable when that bee sting happens to me. Yes, Mr. Weezer wants your votes, because he's rerunning. Say no. Wendy Gruel, say no. And anyone who represents dishonesty, injustice, be gone.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, Mr. Clerk, that brings us to closed session, or...
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Sargent, if you could please clear the council chambers, starting immediately.
At the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You'll be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian, add something like an event such as a real beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to, by the parents, it's, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of a screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over sixteen thousand acres of parkland, with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than one hundred eighty community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Park.
With One Cup, I can play soccer after school.
With One Cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, Kia 5060, Watch 3.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay stable and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
L A Parks dot org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Pal.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine K F five oh six three one two three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten P M until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law, and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, it's the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity, accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Close session. What is before this council? Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements?
Just like to ask that number thirty-two be sent forth with, please.
Without objection? Any announcements? No, if there's more, okay. So it will be sent forth with. Other announcements? Members, other announcements? If we could all please rise, please rise for adjourning motions. I will look to, uh... My left. Mr. Englander, any adjourning motions on your side of the aisle? Now we'll go to Mr. Corret's side. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.